All right, we're live.
Okay, welcome. This is Isle Palm Special City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020 at about 1:00 PM. Please, everyone, after you haven't voted already, vote after this. This is a virtual meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Public comments were received and they are online. If you want to go in and read them, please do. We thank everyone who has sent us comments and we hear you loud and clear. And just so everybody knows, number one, I'd like to say that this meeting is being called to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public have been duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Last week, we had our first reading on our ordinances, two of them. And by municipal law, we are to wait a week before we have a second reading. We've had these things now for not quite two weeks and we realize our residents probably haven't had the time to really digest them. But we do have this meeting scheduled and I think it's a good time for public education. So with this today, we have John Chaffley, our real estate commercial agent. Then we have Brian Kitsch, our real estate attorney who drafted the lease. And we have John Bushnell and Dave Lorenz, the tenants, who are all going to do a presentation to us for our public's knowledge. So if we can start this off with John, if you want to kind of give us a little history of how we started this whole process with us.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nicole, roll call, please. Thank you, Rusty.
Thank you. Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan? I saw him at one point. Mayor Carroll?
Here.
There comes Councilmember Buchanan. Did you want to chime in as being present?
Sure.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, back to John Chaffley.
Thanks, Mayor Carroll. I am pleased to present this summary. We thought it would be best to kind of summarize the timeline, which has happened a little bit in the last meeting, but thought we would put our best foot forward and kind of give the citizens and council the full timeline of where we came from and what brought us here today. Actually, who is that? Desiree? Ron, if you don't mind, I'll share my screen, Ron, if that's okay. Can I?
Sure.
Awesome. Cool. Thanks. So we're going to put together this presentation to kind of walk everyone through how we arrived at a deal and it had a lot of layers to it. But let me just dive right in and see if I can't pull this off myself. Okay, well, best laid plans. That did not work well. Try one other thing.
You've got to love technology.
Yeah. All right, let me try this again. See if this will work. Okay, any luck? Here we go. Can everyone see the Ringer Restaurant Update slide?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. So this all started back in, to council's credit, this Morgan Creek Grill lease did not expire until just this past Saturday. But back in September, council recognized that this was an item that was coming up. Back in September, they voted to pursue a request for new proposals to secure a lease for the Isle Palm Marina Restaurant. Shortly after that, the city hired Hill Construction to perform an assessment of the restaurant building. And then we are firm, myself and Haley Cookton and Lee and Associates were hired in April of 2019 to represent the city and find a good tenant for the property. Let's see, in May of 2019, Hill Construction presented to the building assessment reports to the Real Property Committee. And then Hill Construction's estimates are shown here from that report. There were several different angles that Hill Construction looked at the property. Everything from an a la carte renovation estimate you see on the left here totaling $3 million to a brand-new estimate of building a much larger or a similar-sized property, which was at $4.3 million. And then also a build-new estimate for a smaller space of $2.4 million. What's proposed before everyone today is roughly in the middle of that is a 6,000-square-foot building, although it will not be a brand-new building. It will be an extensively renovated property, which I know John and Dave will touch on later. Back in June 2019, well over a year ago, the city threw us, through our efforts, advertised a call for offers to seek proposal for the restaurant. And that deadline was August 30th of 2019. And then we came to council actually reviewing and discussing in front of public those three proposals. One thing that worthy of mention for the request for proposal that we were tasked with was to lease the site plan as you see it here. And in the blue is the building, the actual existing restaurant building. The red is the outdoor seating area, which I think many of you know as right off the tiki bar there, off to the right of the restaurant, where, you know, kids play and there's music and whatnot. So that's the outdoor seating area. The green is the exclusive parking lot, which is the only parking that the restaurant site had accompanied with it. And then obviously, the restaurant dock. And this is the same deal that Morgan Creek Grill had. They had that dock space for their patrons. And so we were able to offer that as a part of the deal. Back to the parking, you see the exclusive parking lot as it stands now. There's only 32 parking spots on that site. Through extensive work, we were able to, what we believe, through the expense of the tenant, rework that parking lot and get more parking in there. But from day one, parking has been a challenge here. The rest of the parking that you see in white is all either solely controlled by the Marina and the Marina Joint Ventures tenant who operates the Marina. And but the one spot to the left of the green lot is actually a shared parking lot. And so that is shared by everyone who visits the Marina site. So that's the restaurant, the Marina itself, et cetera, et cetera. And then lastly, in the back there, further to the left is an employee parking lot, which is shared by all employees of the Marina. So knowing that this is a restaurant site that really relies on automobile traffic and needed parking spots and whatnot, this parking issue was a real stickler to work through and to get everyone, the city, the proposed tenant, Marina Joint Ventures, to all work together to try to come up with creative solutions. And it was no small task, but I'd like to thank, at the end of the day, everyone pulled together and made it work. I mean, the tenant was able to concede less parking than traditional out parcel restaurants would have. For a site that relies exclusively on car travel, this is not, you know, obviously not a downtown space or it's not on Palm Boulevard, it's not on the water, where, you know, restaurant, you know, there's alternate places to park. The city has in the past restricted some of the parking along that area outside the Marina for restaurants only. So this really was an important issue to look at and overcome. So anyway, that was the site plan as it was proposed and as we solicited. We actually took the, our marketing plan was to essentially scream from the top of our lungs, at the top of our lungs, from the top of the closest mountain, every one we could possibly put this in front of. And as you see here, through press releases, online listings, the MLS Local, CoStar, and Lootnet are the three most widely-used methods of advertising and gathering interest. And we received a good deal of interest. Our task was to try to, frankly, to not spend any of the taxpayers' money and find a deal where we could find someone who had the capability and willingness to do either renovation or a complete rebuild on their own time. And so that was no small task. And several qualified candidates decided at the end of the day they were not up to the capital that it was going to take to create what we're hoping is a pretty cool spot in the future. So you can see here, other professional organizations, email campaigns, direct, you know, marketing calls, et cetera, et cetera. We really did not limit ourselves to the Charleston market and tried to target other restaurateurs who had operated waterfront properties and whatnot. And but at the end of the day, the RFP that was submitted and selected was the one we're talking about today. So continuing along that timeline, the city agreed to enter in December 2019 with exclusive negotiations with the IOP Families Group. And through that, going forward and through the spring, as negotiations were progressing and frankly, a lot of parking conversations were happening. And, you know, the tenant did a lot of work on the building, frankly. We were in the building all the time, making sure that they understood exactly what they were getting into. Because as you all know, the Hill Construction Report was chock-full of a lot of items that needed to be addressed. So the tenant did do a good job of during that time, making sure they understood exactly what they were getting into and to make sure that they could do it all. Once it became clear that we were coming close to terms that might be agreeable to all, the city engaged Handward St. Corbey and Brian Kitsch, who's on the call with us today. And Brian, in my opinion, has done a very nice job for the city. So then, you know, most recently here, August through October of 2020, there's been an ongoing legal review of this agreement between both parties. And then that brings us to today, where council considers a vote to ratify this lease agreement. So in a deal world, if this is approved and moves forward, I think, you know, summer 2021 is obviously a goal. We'd like to have a restaurant open during the season. I think it's going to take a tremendous effort on behalf of the tenant to get that open that quickly. But that is their goal. And if nothing else, perhaps they will have some kind of reduced service or smaller offerings before the full restaurant. If it's not able to open in a timely manner, I think they're planning on phasing that initially to at least have something and someplace for residents and visitors to like to go and eat and drink next summer. So brings us to key deal points. Again, I've talked about it, the tenant accepts a property and as-is condition. The lease stipulates very specifically, because I think council got a lot of feedback from the residents that a restaurant is what was wanted here and that we really kind of saw that through in the lease, providing a sit-down, family-friendly, full-service restaurant. And the lease specifically excludes a counter-service-type restaurant is not permitted. The lease commencement starts immediately. Morgan Creek Grill's lease, again, to be my hat to council in doing this advance work, Morgan Creek Grill actually closed early. They terminated, closed down business prior to the lease ending. We obviously didn't see that coming. And the actual lease wasn't scheduled to expire until really Halloween, just a few days ago. So a big part of what I pushed for the early stages of this, and I think we all kind of rallied, all kind of agreed, was that unfortunately, what we were hamstrung with here is a Marina lease with Marina Joint Ventures that runs through January 31st of 2045. So, you know, while I think what we all kind of agreed is that the city has and really technically doesn't have control of the site, even though they're the owner, until January 31st, 2045, and the city has to adhere to that lease. That kind of left us with a, okay, well, let's figure out a way to find a deal that can get us to that same date that can coincide with the Marina Joint Ventures lease to allow future generations to figure this out. This is, you know, this is an opportunity come, you know, 20 years from now. And that's when the conversation should probably be starting back in 20, probably five years in advance of the state for the council, the future councils and residents at that time to understand exactly what they want from the Marina site. As I understand it, this was voted by majority was that 20, over 20 years ago, to buy the site in a referendum. I think it passed 10 to 1 for the city to buy the site and with the idea of, you know, bringing the site to life for the residents. And so in my honest opinion, the best, our best path forward here is to get a lease agreement that could coincide with that lease. And I'm pleased to present that we were able to get that done and excited for what that site might look for, not only in the immediate future, but in generations to come. Rent commencement starts on August 1st, 2021, allowing them some time to do the buildup. And that obviously is a stop, right? So if it takes them longer to construct and, you know, it drags on for construction delays or whatever it is, the risk of sounding callous, that's not our problem. The rent commencement on this deal is August 1st, 2021. Base year is roughly $100,000 per year through that first couple of years while they get their feet wet. It increases to $120,000 in 2025 and then increases 2% annually thereafter. Further key deal points, and this was a key one. This was, you know, if I may say so, a deal killer, because we would not have accepted base rents at that rate without a percentage rent. And so the percentage rent has a breakpoint of $5 million in sales for years 1 through 12. And then the breakpoint for percentage rent drops to $4 million thereafter. And that's actually in the city's favor. So that means for every dollar of restaurant sales over the breakpoint, the city collects an additional 7%. So $100 in sales, the city is owed another $7 in rent. So, and then here's some examples of sales. There are $6 million annually and the city collects an additional $70,000 per year. So if they do $6 million in a year, if the operator does $6 million in year one, that base rent of $100,000 goes up to $170,000. So this is a way of protecting the city from a bad deal, frankly. And if they knock it out of the park, which we all hope they do, that's a win-win for everyone involved. And then again, obviously, in the years after, years 13 beyond, you know, if, because that breakpoint drops to 4 million, if they were to do $6 million in sales in year 13, they would actually owe us an additional $140,000. So additional rent is to be collected quarterly by the city. We actually had it done annually in our last restaurant deal. And honestly, that was a big burden to the restaurant tenant. So we thought that spreading this additional rent to be paid quarterly was less of a burden on the restaurateur. And obviously, we can, the city doesn't have to wait a full year to collect its additional rent. Further deal points, this is a true triple-net lease. The tenant pays for all expenses associated with the property, structural, regular maintenance, air conditioning breaks. It's not the city's problem. The roof leaks, it's not the city's problem. This is all on the tenant. The tenant is responsible for maintaining the building. It explicitly says in the lease that they have to do a good job of maintaining the building and that we are allowed to inspect and make comments and to ensure that they are taking care of our building. Because while they are building it, essentially, it becomes our property. The city does have the right to improve the improvement. As I mentioned, it just, it's been open in summer 2021. And then lastly, we do have a personal guarantee from the tenant that is essentially ensures that the tenants will build the building as promised and that they will provide us a CO. So worst-case scenario, the city is insured of getting a new building built. And if for some reason this doesn't work out, then, you know, we would have the ability to seek damages through personal means. So we kind of went through various methods to, you know, value a market-rate deal. And I know that, you know, this is regardless of who I talk to, the one thing is for certain that this is a one-of-a-kind property. There's no comps on the market. There's no other, you know, deals that are taking place for waterfront restaurant properties. So it was a little bit hard to come up with competing properties. For that reason, we got an appraisal by Integra Realty Resources. The as-is value of that was determined to be $2.27 million. And so we looked at this from a land lease. So the land lease is typically 50 or more years. But again, we wanted to keep this to half that time. We used a 10% land value for just the base rent only, not the additional rent. And they came up with $227,000 a year. Well, since we're only giving them the rights to the land for half of what would normally be a land lease of 50 years, and we deducted that, we divided that in half and we came up with $113,000 a year in annual rent. So, and you can see, our annual rent starts just a little bit lower than that, 100 grand. It jumps to 120,000 in 2025 with the increases plus the additional rent provision I mentioned. And then, secondly, another way to evaluate it is that rent is a percentage of gross sales. Typically, successful restaurants are, you know, spend between 5% to 8% of their expenses on rent and occupancy costs. And so we kind of put ourselves in the restaurant's shoes and to understand what they could afford to pay while running a successful restaurant. And so we structured a deal that, you know, the average occupancy costs are anticipated with 5.9% in year one for the operator and then 6.5% over the life of the lease. So we didn't feel like that this was, you know, too high or too low in one party's particular favor. And then lastly, there's, everyone likes to put a price-per-square-foot conversation or twist to it. We did some research. According to the commercial MLS, they're having an average restaurant lease, east of the Cooper is 2368 foot in the last 12 months. And then another good source for us, commercial real estate world is CoStar. And their average restaurant lease completed in east of the Cooper was $24 a square foot over the same period. So, you know, our initial period of rate is, albeit a little bit lower than that, at 1650 a foot. And the rent in 2025 goes up a little higher to 1938 a square foot and then does increase 2% annually. But again, these base rents, you know, these base rents do not factor in, number one, the structural improvements that are needed to the property to begin with. We have a property that needs attention, as evidenced in the Hill Construction Report. And then factoring in the tenant's cost of funds to repair and upgrade the building costs from the tenant's perspective, you know, they are paying $47.83 a square foot in 2022. So, you know, we just kind of fast-forward, you know, eight or nine years here. And if sales forecasts are correct, which was about $5 million, I believe, in year two or three. I can't remember exactly, regardless. In 2029, we figured the total rent would be about, not including the cost, you know, for them to upgrade the building, would actually be in 2029, the total cost of rent would be $40 triple-net, well over 50. And when you add in the additional expenses, the rate would be about $52, $53 a square foot. So this is where I would have put a closing slide, thank you. But I didn't have a chance to do that. So anyway, that is, my presentation kind of runs through the history of it, the deal points and whatnot. And so with that, I will stop sharing my screen and send it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we move on to our next presenter, does anyone on council have questions for John? Hearing none. As opposed to going to our attorney next. Let's go to John Bushnell and Dave Lorenz so they can kind of give us a background of how they got to where, how they found out about us and how long it took for them to make that decision and what it's taken for them to make this decision, to make this their location on the Isle Palms. Gentlemen?
Yeah, we, you know, I can't stress enough that we live on the island. We've lived on the island for over 15 years. So knowing about Morgan Creek is obvious. We went there, we visited it. And so we did know the lease was coming up. And so we, you know, John kind of asked me, you know, you think we should go after this thing and take a look at it? And, you know, I wasn't at first. I was like, I don't know. This is a big building. It's in really bad shape, I think. You know, we hadn't been able to dig into it. But, you know, the more kind of it got closer to when the lease was coming up and we got a little more serious about it, we started digging in a lot further. And we think there's a great opportunity here. And again, there's a great opportunity to create a, you know, really world-class restaurant that's a destination at the end of the island and, you know, really service the community in the island. And we think we have the experience and, you know, have the vision that the island is looking for, especially listening to the comments that came out of that, the meeting at the beginning of the year. Guess it wouldn't be this year as being last year. But if you want to go through the, I think, Ron, you're going to share the slides with us. We'll just go through kind of, again, how we got here and kind of some of our vision with this. So you can go to the next slide, please. Do y'all see in that?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, you see, you know, like I said, our vision is really we're to create a restaurant that's locally owned and operated and can be that flagship gathering spot for the community. You know, we see this as a huge opportunity. Take a building that was in, is in really rough shape. You know, even since we started looking at it, the building is, a building that sits doesn't get better on its own. It rapidly deteriorates. So right now, the ceiling in the kitchen has actually fallen in from where it was before. So there's added cost, you know, almost every day as we go through. There's been broken windows, there's leaks in the ceiling. And it's really in a rough shape. And that's what I think everybody needs to kind of understand. You know, when you look outside at it, you see a building and it looks okay. But when we got in and we really started digging into it, it's going to need some significant, you know, improvement. And that's where, you know, after doing some digging with structural engineer and an architect, we felt like it was, you know, a challenge we wanted to take on. And, you know, part of this is that, there you go. You can, part of this is, you know, if you look at the, what we're going to be doing in this area is really kind of upgrading and making more user-friendly to the community and, you know, to our neighbors and to us, obviously. We see the outdoor fan pit area. We'd like to make that a little more usable, put some pavers down, clean up some of the broken concrete that's around there and do some And do some landscaping, add some bike racks. I don't know if the golf car parking will be here or another place, but just make it a great kind of communal area, outdoor space where you can really enjoy the weather. We'll do a lot of events, you know, we can use it for fundraisers. We can use it for oyster roast, all those kinds of things that, that Morgan Creek did a great job at. We'll continue to, to keep that, those traditions going. So Ron, you go to the next slide. One of the big things, you know, again, is that came up in the Hill report, which I know is on the islepom.net. Is the building was in significant disrepair or is. And one of the big areas that we found in the most problematic area was this area that's highlighted in the red, which there's a cooler back there and there was an office. And the foundation is just not in, in good working condition. So our plan is to open up that side of the building. Basically take the whole side of that building off and build an outdoor deck, a covered outdoor deck. So be out of the elements, but would still give you the outside, you know, feel and give you this great view of intercoastal waterway. And that's something that I think the building has been missing for a long time. It's kind of sitting on the, you know, right on the intercoastal and having a great view, watching them both go by and being able to enjoy the sunset. So this is a huge piece that we're, we're chomping off and, you know, we're going to have to take that part of the building off. We're going to have to redo a lot of the electrical, HVAC work. It's not a, an easy task. So part of that, besides that, we're going to in, you know, kind of rework a little bit of the inside. And we're going to move the bathrooms to be larger and more ADA compliant, which currently they're not. And we're going to renovate kind of the interior dining as well to capture the intercoastal waterway a little bit better. So this is a big, again, a big renovation that we're talking about. You can go to the next slide. So we had some, you know, conceptual ideas here. You know, this is just kind of some off on looking at, kind of what we're looking at. We'd like to open it up, make it a little bit brighter, make it a little more, you know, user friendly and stuff like that. Nice open light, bright colors, open space. So it's just, again, these are ideas that we're, we're looking at. The next one, Ron? So if you look at the, back to the interior, this is how it stands now. And you see there's at the, at the top there where the dining room enclosed porch, they say on the drawing. It's significant structural issues. You know, a lot of work needs to be done in this area. So you can go to the next slide. Now I'll kind of illustrate a little better on what we're going to be doing. So you have one and two right there. The red is really an unusable area that there's a cooler that's rotting through, the pylons holding it are done. We got to completely redo this area. And, and then the other green space is part of that outdoor or indoor kind of shed area, dining room area that's kind of sloping down and is really almost falling into the marsh. So these one and two are, we're going to take this off the building, which will reduce the square footage. And we're going to make it a more usable outdoor space, more of a deck that will overlook the intercoastal and give views of the water and things like that, which will be just a better use of the space. Three, where we have in here, we're kind of rework the kitchen a little bit, which is no easy task. There is absolutely nothing in that kitchen right now. It is down to the bare walls and is in really rough shape. So, you know, redoing a lot of the plumbing in that area and walls and things like that to rework this space is going to be needed. And then like I talked about, we see moving the bathrooms up to the front of the building, which I know everybody that has gone to Morgan Creek always bizarre when you'd be at the sand pit and you'd walk through the dining room to get to the bathrooms. And you walk by people having a nice meal all dressed up and you're in your flip flops and board shorts and cutting the dining room. So we're hopefully with this change, we're going to make it, the, the restroom is a little more accessible, be located more at the front of the building. And, you know, again, larger and ADA compliant, which, which they weren't in the existing. And then the, the fifth part would be removing this stairwell that also is not up to code. And will, this will kind of open that space up, kind of like the picture show and just give it a better feel when you walk in. You'll be able to have great views of the intercoastal. And it'll just open the space up, it'll be a little more light and bright. All right, Ron, you got the next one? So conceptually, we haven't, you know, hired a chef. We haven't put any, you know, pen to paper on an actual menu. But we see doing reasonably priced items and casual dining. We don't see this as Hall's Chop House as a high-end. You know, we're the ordinary or one of those great restaurants. But, you know, we feel like this needs to be more approachable for the island residents. I have myself included that you can go down and you can be there once a week, twice a week. And, you know, still you don't break the bank, your kids can eat for, you know, reasonably priced kids items or kids meals, things like that. So do that, you know, that's where kind of some of the the lease cost and, and the renovation all kind of plays, comes into play. And, and, you know, again, my restaurant experience is over 25 years with multiple restaurants and multiple states as well. And, you know, to make a reasonably priced menu, you've got to have other factors. It's not just the way that your chef prepares stuff. You've got to have the other mechanics, the size of the building, your lease cost, the, the age of the building, all that factored in. And that's where we think we can, you know, deliver what we think the island or what the island really wants with this kind of menus. So these are, these are things that we're just playing with. We don't have anything in stone, but it's kind of our luck. So next slide there, Ron? It's the fun part, right? The, we got the bar. I know everybody was waiting for the bar. What is going to? Right. Yeah, this is a, this is an important part, you know. We've always seen that a, a good bar creates a nice community with everybody. It's a great place. And that's how Morgan Creek was. Again, we want to continue that tradition as a local hangout spot where, you know, you can have a drink with the mayor, you can have a drink with the local fishing guide. You know, everybody is all there, one place, kind of coming together as a community. And I think Morgan Creek did a great job with that. And we just see kind of carrying on that tradition of having that outdoor space and, and elevating the bar program a little bit to offer, you know, a little bit different items for different tastes and things like that. So. Next slide. So really, you know, to kind of sum it up a little bit. I think there's a couple of things, you know, I just want to kind of say and get off my chest. One is, you know, I've heard of neighbors and friends on the island. There's a lot of misinformation going around for sure. There's no conspiracy going on with, with us or the council or on Chowfi or anything like that. It's, it's almost, it's kind of shocking in my opinion, but it's almost laughable that there's, there's backroom meetings and all this. And, and I'm kind of like, I, well, I know I wasn't in those meetings. So everything that we've been talking about is really open. It's on the website. We're here, we live here. I surf at 25th Avenue all the time. I ride my bike around here. I run into a lot of the, the community walking at night with my wife. And, and we're always here to talk and answer any kind of questions. So, you know, we're, we're really open to making this thing work and making, creating a great restaurant for the, for the island. You know, I think the big thing that's misleading is the amount of capital that we're going to have to put into this. This is why, you know, when you hear about lease rates and things like that, it might not make sense at first, but when you look at the sheer amount of dollars that we're going to have to put into getting this building just up to code. And then, you know, making it something that's going to last 24 years is another big piece. This is a long lease and, you know, you've got to keep that up. And, and right now I've got a restaurant on Sullivan's Island that we pay probably 40 to 75,000 dollars a year in just upkeep. Because it's an old building and, you know, we're going to have that maintenance cost going all year, all the time. And it's a big building. It's got a lot of, a lot of things going. It's right on the water. So, you know, we're committed to, you know, keeping the building looking great, keeping it up to par. I've done that with all my restaurants over 25 years. You can't defer maintenance on things like this. And, and I think again, you know, one big factor with this lease and with this, you know, with the whole plan is the, the city's not putting any money up at all. And, and that's rare, especially now in COVID. I, I know of a couple of restaurants that are actually getting full buildings or restaurants getting built out by the landlord. And, you know, they're getting breaks on the rent and all, and all this kind of stuff. Well, you know, one of the goals for the city was not to spend any money on this project. I think there's a lot of deferred maintenance going on. There's a lot of projects that the city needs to work on, infrastructure, things like that. And so their goal was to, you know, find somebody to put the money up. And, you know, we're, we're going to be doing that. We're going to be doing it right. We're going to build out something that I think the whole community will be proud of. And, and we're really excited to get going on this thing. You know, I said at the beginning of, of empty building goes by real quick. I mean, it's, it's starting to show its age quicker and quicker. We're ready to jump into this. We're very excited to be a part of the community. You know, we work together with the citizens. I, I'm a big fan of working together with the other restaurants on the island. I, I'm good friends and on speed dial of many of the restaurants on Sullivan's Island. We work great together there. I've always worked great together with other businesses and charities, you know, in town and in Charleston. So I think we're going to bring the right vibe and the right ownership to this property. And I think we're going to create something that's going to be great for all the families and, and even the visitors and the, the tourists that come in. They're going to create something really special. So, you know, I'm excited to get started on it. If y'all have any questions, you know, again, feel free to reach out and, and ask away.
Right now is a good time for council members, since we're on this public meeting, to ask any questions of Dave and John. Anyone? Susan?
You are muted.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. And the John Chelsea and the Island Families Group might be able to start with, can you remind me what Morgan Creek's annual sales usually ran? And then what the Island Families Group projects their sales will be over the course of time annually?
I'll take the first one, Susan. I believe and Desiree can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the last year of sales at Morgan Creek Grill was 4.35 million. And, you know, our thought is that with all due respect, it had grown a little tired in service and, and the whole, the entire restaurant experience. And that breathing new life into the site and creating a new fresh property would, would translate into an increase in sales.
With the history before that last year, what was the highest that they achieved in sales? Do we know?
Susan, I don't have that number handy, although I know that we have that on.
Okay. Yeah.
I think, Susan, I think it was higher. You know, restaurant, there, in just history and restaurants in Charleston, I mean, there was a kind of a 2016, 17 was a little bit higher. Everyone kind of trailed off in 18, 19, just because of competition. It just got so over, you know, there was restaurants opening all the time. To answer the other question, we're probably around in that same trajectory of, you know, the same sales due to the fact that we're going to reduce the square footage. But also, you know, we want to have some reasonably priced items. Our, you know, check average might be a little bit lower. And, but it, it'll be, you know, reasonable. We'll have the things that everyone will offer. So it, it's really hard to say about the, the magic number. I mean, as a restaurateur, it's a really hard thing that everybody asks. And, and I think we're somewhere in that, that range that the, you know, the four, $5 million range. It's, it, it all depends on, it is a lot of factors. I mean, you can COVID, weather, and there's all kinds of things.
Okay. And then, so speaking of the price range and trying to keep it affordable, what are our assurances that you will, you know, continue to work towards that goal? I mean, I, I think that the thinking was we are trying to make this more doable for you so that you will then be able to have, have the ability to provide affordable price points. And so, but what assurance do we have that later down the road, that equation might not change?
Well, I, I mean, being involved in, it's just, it's something that I have done kind of my whole career is to create affordable, you know, my history with sticky fingers, the Bohemian Bowl, other things is they're not, I, I'm not a high-end fine dining guy. And, and it's just more approachable. Again, have kids and, you know, I know that feeling when you go out and you're feeding for two kids and they eat half a cheeseburger and half a contender and then run off to the sand pit. And you're like, oh my God, that was $20 for this. So I, I think it's just in our DNA that we're going to keep it reasonable. We have friends and, you know, on the island and they'll let us know for sure if, you know, if it's off. But we want to, you know, serve a, a great guest experience, quality, you know, product. That's just in my DNA. I mean, that's what I do. So I don't see strain from that at all.
And, and you see that price point also leading to more volume as well?
I mean, yeah, I think, I think the volume will come from the customer experience. That is a big driving force in sales in the restaurant business. And, you know, hiring great people, hiring the right people that are on that shift. And so you can, you know, you get there and you can get your meal and you can get out if you want to. You can get that, I can drink if you want to. So those are all things that, again, my experience has led me to, you know, believe that the higher volume will come from the guest experience and the, the product that we're delivering, food quality.
And I would imagine, you know, the return visits from residents as well as others who, who get in the habit of, of going and seeing their neighbors there. And then finally, my last question is just what the value of the dock to you in this equation? Because I, I think that there's some question about, you know, how integral that is and, and what it represents for you.
Part of that equation was taken into the limited parking. So right now there's 32 spots. So in our, factor of our projections, we use those spaces as additional parking spots. So that's was a reflection of our protection to get back onto the similar revenue that Morgan Creek Grill had. So that's why those dock spaces are important, that we have, you know, transient traffic that's coming down there in coastal that we can use to supplement our limited parking.
I think to the, you know, part of it will be to your point on sales and things like that, that will help drive sales. I mean, we did with COVID, we created a, you know, curbside pickup and all these kinds of things. So we see with the, the dock, you know, you can, we're going to have a dock attendant, which they didn't have. And, and the Marina manager was psyched to hear that we were going to be doing that. And, you know, to help boats come in and out and they could pick up something to go real quick and then be on their way to Capers or wherever. So that was, that's kind of our goal as well.
And, and the visual that you guys showed, it actually made it look like maybe you had in mind to have some seating out there? Or would that be the decking that you're talking about? Some of those pictures. Well, it looked like there was seating more out on the water in some of those pictures. But it maybe it's that you were trying to represent more of a docks, I mean, a deck side seating.
Yeah, yeah. It's just the deck. Beware that, that part of the front building that faces interactive there, that was, so it's, you know, behind that fence line that's already there.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it and appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Streetman, and then it's Councilmember Bell.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to say to John Chowfi and also the Families Group, you know, very good presentation, a lot of good information in here. I hope that the residents of the island get a chance to really review this over the next, whatever amount of time we have before we really look at this, this lease further. And, but anyway, good information, a couple of ahas for me too, in, in regards to the appraisals and some of the comps and things like that. And, you know, having been on council, you know, for 10 months or so, at this point, a lot of this information is information that I really didn't, didn't know before. It looks to me like you have a good business plan conceptually. And I know that there's a, a lot of work still to do. But I like the thoughts of you having, you know, moderately priced food, drinks, turnover with customers, you know, we need to make sure we have ample parking and of course the dock space like we're talking about. And so that you can have that turnover and increase the volume overall. And then, and I, 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 I think you've got a potential And then, and I, 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 I think you've got a potential formula here that's going to work very well for this island and in that location. I, I would ask the families group if, uh, from a, from a conceptual standpoint, I like the slides that you've shown. We've seen some of those before, but, uh, in terms of sort of architecturally, what you're looking at now, and when, when do you think that you would have really a better picture for the residents, uh, to see as to how that restaurant is actually going to look, uh, when you get it completed? Any idea?
Well, uh, couple of comments. Number one is in the lease, there are two provisions for the city to have full approval rights over our design and layout. Number one is the actual approval of the architectural and number two is the issuing of a certificate of occupancy. Make sure that we've done what we had laid out for the city. So there are protections in the lease for the city. The other part of your question comes with the timing. Um, it's dependent on when the lease is issued or signed because we do have preliminary plans from the architect, but the next stage, to do the final plan is, is very expensive and time consuming. So we think from the day we'll say go to the architect, it would take him about six weeks, a final plan that we could submit for building permits.
And, and the last thing I would say is I think it's not been, it's not been real clear, the kind of, uh, real investment you, you all are going to be making in this building. At really no cost to the city. I mean, you, you've got a building there that is very rundown and you know that you've got a lot of expenses that you've got to put in there to make it, uh, serviceable and also to maintain it going forward because it's an old structure. And, uh, uh, and I honestly think that, uh, what we have here is a good plan.
Rusty, that wasn't a, that wasn't a question, but I'll just reply to your comment that I would implore everybody to read the Hill report. And I will also say that, uh, the issues outlined there are accurate. In addition, that Hill report was done eighteen months ago and the building has deteriorated significantly since then. As Dave mentioned earlier, you know, even the ceiling has fallen through in the, in the kitchen. There's significant, uh, water damage now as well as mold, uh, throughout parts of the building. So take the report and add 20% to it because that's how bad it has gotten. The other part I would say to your comment in terms of the building is as John Chalfy said, this was a unique situation where we couldn't get a lease long enough to make, uh, ground lease, but the building wasn't suitable or inhabitable now to do a full commercial lease. So when he said there's really no comp, he meant the fact that this is a partially, superior, partial rebuild of a structure in addition, having all the regular tenant improvement costs that would take to, you know, outfit a restaurant, get it ready. So that's why this was a unique situation that came up with, um, a number of problems that, but there, how it went well in the Hill report.
I think one other piece that is on there too, Rusty, kind of what you're, might have been talking toward is, you know, one provision in the lease also is that, you know, there's a third party kind of auditor that is going to be involved. So it's kind of help go through the, the process and stuff like that, which is kind of rare. But, you know, we're fine with it because we know, you know, who we're going to be using and do the construction, local guys and stuff like that. And again, we're going to be here, um, able to watch that, this thing get renovated. But, um, having that other, you know, the city having that protection is a great thing of just some oversight, making sure it's being built out correctly.
Okay. And one, one last thought, Mr. Mayor, if, if I could. Uh, I think, you know, full transparency on this is great for the residents. So they'll be able to source the Hill report online, that sort of thing. And also the presentation today, I'm assuming that will be posted on the website also as part of the update. So that all of our residents who are interested in looking at what the plans are and what the updates were, the timeline, et cetera, et cetera, are all there for them to see and, uh, absorb as well over the next weeks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of comments just on the Hill report. I think it's worth noting that, uh, even Morgan Creek Grill was operating under de-hack violations for the floor underneath the freezers being a danger. So, I mean, it, it, it's been bad for a long time and, uh, that $2 million plus, uh, the investments required, just, just looking at that alone has significant value. A couple of questions for the restaurateurs. First compliments to Councilmember Popsen for helping us with parking, bringing in folks that he knew to reconfigure both parking areas essential to the restaurant. But I, I think it's worth having, uh, John and Dave comment on this quote exclusive employee parking area. Because the conversation has been amongst the three parking areas, one controlled by Morgan, uh, excuse Morgan, Marina Joint Ventures, part that's appended strictly to the restaurant, the balance being managed on behalf of the city by the Marina manager. So we're looking at dedicated parking for the employees and the relevance and importance of that parking to being able to commit to this restaurant. So if John or Dave, if you wouldn't mind commenting on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, one of the things that we've always said is, is that parking is an issue down there. And the thing that was brought up by Chalfy, um, earlier that, you know, if, when, in most municipalities, there's zoning that says you have to have this many parking spaces per seats and all this kind of regulations. And I, and I think there was an ATM report that, um, said, you know, if that was the case, we would need 120 parking spaces. And, and if you go to downtown, I had to pull out of a, a project downtown Charleston because we couldn't get enough parking spaces. So we were able to, you know, work with Marina Joint Ventures and which is great. I, I don't know for sure, but I don't know if there was a great relationship between the past tenant and them. But we sat down and kind of, you know, worked through the, um, the process and worked together, to come up with a, a, you know, a, a system that will work for, for both of us. And, um, you know, given us, like you said, you know, a little bit more parking in the front and some reserved, you know, employee parking, um, and some valet parking to make it easier for anybody coming down there. You know, I always bring up the boathouse and they've got, you know, hardly any parking, but I go there, you know, often to go to that rooftop deck and just pull up, know that there's going to be a valet there and pay a couple bucks when I leave and, and it's great. So creating that kind of environment, um, you know, hopefully people will take their golf carts or ride bike or walk to the Marina, the, the residents. But, um, for others that will drive, you know, we'll have solutions for them in place.
And two comments. One regarding the employees, it's, you know, in order to have, uh, a good employee and long-term employee base, we need to have parking that's secured for them. Otherwise they would choose, you know, other places of employment that would be easier for them to earn the same amount of money. But just removing one layer of issues to having good employees there. The second part, I also agree that, thank you to Councilmember Popsen for helping us design better parking because we, uh, plan to implement better and improved design to increase golf cart parking, bike racks, which encourages residents and visitors alike. But we are working within the confines that we had. And most importantly, as Dave just mentioned, we will have valet parking. The plan right now is to have that on Saturday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, and so that would be free of charge for, um, the customers.
Councilmember Ward?
You're muted, Jimmy.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to know from the tenants, what you would say to current restaurant owners on the island and some citizens that they feel like there's an appearance, an appearance of city subsidizing this private enterprise just to get the restaurant up and going. And I also like to know what you would have to say if I talked to other restaurateurs, including my own brother, who has a restaurant on the intercoastal in Florida, northern Florida for 14 years, that tell me that their rent was anywhere between eight and 11% of gross sales. I am just asking you, um, to answer these questions from people that I know, including my own brother.
So the first one, I mean, talking to other restaurateurs on the island. I, I mean, I, I don't, um, I don't know where, again, what, what I said earlier about misinformation and there is, yeah, I don't know, backside money or, or money going in to help or anything like that is just false. In, in the sense of, you know, we're putting the money up, it's pretty clean. We've got a dilapidated building. We're putting the money up, um, to renovate the city-owned asset. And, you know, that's kind of what we're doing. Um, the rent percentages, I mean, I don't, I have some pretty much lower rent percentages in my restaurant. I can't, you know, you can read books and, and on business, you know, on, on restaurants and they throw out these eight to 10% and things like that. But, um, Sullivan's, we don't have that anywhere near to that. Um, and so we've just, I've always operated at a lower, um, rent structure, but I also don't have fine dining restaurants. So, you know, without having all the information, Jimmy, on, on the other, you know, structures. Because the, the rent is only one factor, as you know. I mean, there's food costs and bar costs and the cost of employees, which is much higher nowadays. It, it's really hard to just say there's a certain number we should be at. I think, you know, I've said this is a fair lease to do what we, the city wants to do and the, the kind of restaurant that the city wants to have. I look forward to working with all the other restaurateurs on the island. I freak with them, you know, often and know them. And, uh, and I think we've all got a, a great, you know, it'll be a great synergy like there is on Sullivan's Island with all the restaurateurs where, you know, there's plenty of business here. I mean, there's plenty of business and there's plenty of opportunity for everybody to work together. Uh, I just don't, you know, I don't see that being I don't know if I necessarily answered the first question, I, or the second question that you're liking.
He's fine. It's just, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing. I'm just telling you what I'm hearing. And, um, you know, especially for my own family, you know, because I was in, I was, um, investor in that Florida restaurant with, in fact, it was called Ward's Landing. It was right outside of Ponte Vedra Beach.
Oh, nice. That's a great, I would just, that's a great area. And there's a couple there, you know, that are on the intercoastal. They've got more restaurants definitely on Florida that's, that's on the intercoastal.
Right. Well, I appreciate you. I mean, I know there's a, there's a hard questions, but I appreciate your candor and, uh, in answering for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnes?
Who, Mayor?
Thank you. You're up.
Me? Thank you. Um, this question's probably more for John Chalfy and I would echo Rusty's comment. Thank you and, and the IOP families group very much for putting the presentation decks together. Most of this information's been covered at various times, but to have it all pulled together, hopefully council can answer a lot of the questions that are coming. But John, you mentioned early on about, you know, the interest in the RFP only wound up having three actual presentations or bids made at the time, you know, it was over. And I didn't, I didn't know until the last 24 hours, we had so many real estate experts on the island. But what do you attribute that to, John, that people pulled out or didn't make a bid? I mean, it's kind of a, we've talked about some of the complexities of this deal, with it being city-owned and parking and all that. What, what do you attribute to not having more bids at the time when we put this out?
Thanks, Phil. That's a good question. Um, I am 100%. That's the easiest question I'm going to get all day. It was because the, the building's current condition. I was very, I had to be very transparent. I showed everyone the Hill construction report. And frankly, you know, the task, you know, we all wanted to set out for was to not send, spend any city funds on the project. We didn't want to, you know, put the millions of dollars into the property and then turn around and, and lease it to a tenant. We were, um, the task was clear as, you know, find a, a deal that, um, someone willing to come in and put their own capital. And I had, um, at least three very well-heeled local restaurateurs who frankly, no better way of saying it, are flush with capital, have plenty of money, are in restaurant business. And they just, you know, at the end of the day, they just decided that the deal was not for them.
Good. Thank you, John.
Okay. Any other council members for questions? Councilmember Begin and then Desiree.
Perfect. Thank you. Hey, um, thanks, John, and John again for showing up. Um, excuse the background noise, but and also, so we're putting, you know, you guys are putting nearly $2 million into the project. How much have you guys spent in thus far, this, the, the past 12 months or working on the project to try to figure out how much it's going to, it was going to take to get, get the structure to where you need to be? And like I said, in those $2 million only includes the improvements, how much more do you think you would have to spend to upfit and get the building operational? I mean, equipment costs, um, everything else that goes into a business like that. I don't have a clue.
Well, I can speak to what we spent to date. We've been at this for over 15 months. Not including, you know, hours and effort on our time, just outside third-party services. We've hired an attorney. Well over, his bill's well over $10,000 now. We've hired an architect whose bill's well over $10,000. We've hired a structural engineer who, who's less than that. He's probably, uh, around $5,000. We've hired designers, uh, we've hired general contractors to come up and help us bid, uh, certain items that we had to pay them knowing that we might not get the lease. So we had upfront. So all in all, we're both in $10,000 solves with no guarantee. As we said, this wasn't our neighborhood, our community, we would not have pursued this. And so that's what we've spent to date with still no lease in hand. What is going to cost going forward? Again, I, I would point to the Hill report has just a independent third-party assessment of market rate costs. The other thing I would make everyone aware is look up the price of lumber. Since we first started these conversations and especially since April, lumber's gone up 70%. Windows are up almost 30% in the last seven months. So you would take all those factors in, it's hard for me to predict where lumber's going to be in six months from now. But I can tell you, uh, we didn't expect a 70% rise and we did not go back to the city and try to renegotiate. We kept to our numbers, even though our construction costs are increasing daily.
And to your point on other, you know, one, when you get into renovations, there really can be tricky because you can open cans of worms. I mean, we hope that we did it enough due diligence with the structure engineer that we feel like there's a good core there. And we kind of designed around that core. But, and then on what you have FFNE furniture, fixtures, equipment, you know, you can run upwards of, or $300,000 or so for that kind of stuff. So it, it's, um, but it's hard to tell till you get in there and you have a menu and then you have, you built out your kitchen and, you know, but again, where the cost of things are right now is, is really hit or miss. And what's available is another big thing. That kind of answers it. It's, it's hard to hit a moving target when we haven't really got in yet.
Thank you. City Administrator, Russell, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to expand a little bit on the conversation about the parking agreement, the exclusive parking agreement between the IOP families group and Marina Joint Ventures. As you all know, we talked about how complicated the parking conversation has been and, you know, throughout this whole process. Mainly due to the fact that we're dealing with a lease that predates most of us and it's sort of set in stone. So we have to maneuver and negotiate through, through that. The Marina manager and the Marina Joint Ventures lease does require the tenant to provide free employee parking to all tenants and subtenants, to all tenant employees. However, the restaurant group felt important to have control and have exclusive use of this parking for employees. And I think John Bushnell talked about it, how important it is to ensure that when restaurants show up, uh, employees show up for work, they do have a, a place to park. And, you know, we can go look in the history of the relationship and the issues that we had with the former tenant and not finding appropriate space. And I guess, you know, the, the ambiguities on, um, the existing lease that we're working around, due to the fact that it doesn't spell out how many parking spaces need to be provided for employees. So that's the reason why, you know, it is very beneficial for both parties to work on a parking agreement that works for, for the benefit of, of, of both parties. And that's part of the reason why, you know, you have on your agenda also a, a very limited amendment to the Exhibit Five related to the employee parking to protect a restaurant in the event that the parking, the parking agreement between those two parties is terminated. We still have a way to protect, um, and provide employee parking to, to the restaurant, whether it's IOP families, um, or, or, or whoever. But, um, I just wanted to expand on that because I know that there have been some questions raised about the nature and the, and the need of that agreement between the, the two groups. the nature and the need of that agreement between the two groups, the two potential tenants, the existing tenant and the IOP families group.
Desiree, would you elaborate for our general public that when we're in negotiations, whether with the tenants, parking, et cetera, we have to do this in executive session? These things can't be made public during negotiations because it's private business. Same thing with personnel matters. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, you're correct in that the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act does protect contractual agreements and contractual negotiations from being done in the public sphere. And just like any, the nature of any contract and any negotiation, there is value in not sort of showing your hand, basically. So that's why it's protected and it's exempted from the disclosure laws. And that's the reason why city council had executive sessions because every time there was any discussion that needed to be shared with the group was done and was presented to the full body. No, no decisions were made in executive session. No decisions were made by staff without sharing it and getting approval from, from the, from the policy setting group.
Thank you, Desiree. I just wanted our public to realize that we go behind those closed sessions. We have to go behind those closed doors. Thank you. Any other council members for Dave or John? Hearing none. Moving on to our purpose of this meeting or the second readings of ordinance 202012, an ordinance to enter into a commercial lease with Marker 116 LLC, and the second reading of ordinance 202013, a fifth amendment to the commercial lease agreement with Marina Joint Ventures. Do I hear, before we go there, let's go back to our attorney, Brian Kitz. Brian, would you, is there anything that we need to know, the public needs to know in drafting our lease over these past few months?
There's a few things that might help. I think one thing that everyone should know is that, you know, the lease at this point has been heavily negotiated between both parties. I mean, I have a little document stamped that y'all probably don't see, but on the bottom of each document, this is version 17 of the lease. So, you know, it's been heavily negotiated by both parties. I think to a, to a point that really serves the needs of both the tenant groups, which is business, and the landlord here, which is not a commercial and is not a typical commercial landlord. It's a, it's a city. And I think we've gotten there. Some of the, I guess, concerns that I've heard raised during this session involve the cap, the tenant's capital commitment to the renovation of their restaurant building. And I think that it's worth noting here that the landlord, the city, has fairly comprehensive oversight and approval of pretty much the entire construction process. And I would point everyone's attention to Exhibit E, which is the work letter, which is signed along with the lease. And the, the city's entitled to review preliminary site plans, preliminary project budget, cost estimates, the actual build-out estimates, and the final construction plans and specifications. So the city's thumbprints are all over this. The, you know, the obligation to actually build, to build out the tenant space to, to engage the contractors and complete construction is entirely on the tenant. But the, the city does have fairly comprehensive oversight of that process.
Any questions from council to our attorney? I do have one question, Brian. Would you find it a lot easier for a tenant to negotiate with a single landlord as opposed to dealing with a city with nine council members in negotiation?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted people to hear that it's very hard to negotiate when you got nine different opinions.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would second that to Brian. Y'all been great.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Okay. Moving on, the second readings for-
Mr. Mayor?
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I have a question of our, of, thank you. So I understand that we have a oversight over the construction. A question that I've asked and I've had asked me is, you know, what is the city's, what is the city able to do if the construction plans are significantly less than what is projected? Which I understand is unlikely due to the support, but because the question has been asked.
So when you say less, do you mean a dollar value? The thing just costs less than we wanted it to?
Sure. Yeah, I'll give the scenario. We are factoring in obviously significant upfront investment that the group is making in the city asset. If that investment is significantly less than what we had anticipated in negotiations, obviously that would impact our, our position and the price per square foot we charge. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's likely, obviously, given everything that we know about the cost of materials, construction and-
So in the event that the construction documents and that the renovation plans came in and were of a much lesser scope than the city expected, it wouldn't be approved. I mean, and construction wouldn't, it can't go forward without city approval pursuant to the work letter. And in the event that the plans and specifications, project budget, et cetera, you know, were just of lesser quality than what the, I think the city is expecting and what was, has been proposed by the tenant group, the city says no, they don't approve that item. And in fact, the work letter does provide for both city rejection and then a mechanism through which the tenant can either revise the plans and specifications or revise the budget and resubmit.
I'm here. Thank you.
And thank you, John. I'm sorry I can't see your face or your raising of the hand. So apologize for not seeing you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Just a quick follow-up along those lines. When we talk about city approval for these construction plans, what is the process for that? Is that a process that involves city council or is that done at an administrative level?
Desiree, I would say administrative level. We start putting nine people in there, we're getting into a very confusing situation. Administrative and building department. Desiree?
From a deal perspective-
Yes, sir.
From a, from a deal perspective, you know, we have expectations of what was, we've been led to believe is going to be the case. And, and, you know, if it doesn't meet that, and Brian put it best, so we can give them the, you know, right to, you know, beef it up or improve it more, or we actually have the right to cancel the lease if we aren't able to come up with a mutual agreement on, on what that's to look like and, and the investment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bell?
Just quick, quick comment. I would think that administration would bring forward, you know, an overall design, you know, through real property or in front of councils so that, you know, we wind up with, with a building that totally is out of character for what the expectations of the city are. I think what you're talking about really is the, the underlying detail of construction materials and things like that. Council just simply doesn't need to be engaged in. But the community deserves to see what the finished product's going to look like and, and that should come before council. That's a question, actually.
Oh, correct. Yes. That's the process that I would follow. I mean, that was the building director would go through plans and specifications, but any, any conceptual drawing about what the vision about what the building will look like will definitely go through council and, and I believe that, you know, council is interested in providing input throughout that whole process and development.
We want-
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Ward.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. It's been a long process. We've had this material 10 days. The public has had 10 days, but especially it's been, all of this has hit the street in the past. Just a few days since last, probably last Thursday or Friday. I don't know about everybody else, but my mailbox and my phone have been blowing up about this, entering into this lease. Today is a presidential election. A lot of people's minds are on other things than this lease. I would, this time I'd like to make a motion to defer further consideration of this lease until this regular city council meeting, which is on November 17th. We have a city council in ways and means meeting the same night, I do believe.
We have a-
Second.
We have a second discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember speaking.
I have a pretty serious conflict on the 17th. I'm on the advisory board for the Medical University Children's Hospital. We have a charitable event that takes place annually that I'm very much involved in. So it would be very difficult for me to make a, make a meeting on the 17th. I would suggest that we try to do it next Tuesday on the 10th. Would be my suggestion. I know that we're just in discussion here right now, but, and I know I'm just one person, but there also is one other council member that has been involved in that same charitable activity, an event over the past several years. And it's one of the things that is important to me personally and professionally with what I do. So I would just like for us to consider a date other than the 17th.
Would you like to make that in a motion of an amendment? The motion?
I would like to, I would like to make, yeah, an amendment to the original motion that we have the meeting on Tuesday, November the 10th at whatever time you desire. And I would also say that we should have it open to the public in regards to any Zoom comments that want to be made, even though it is a special meeting. So, and that will give the, you know, the residents and the public an additional week here to review the materials and to also give us comments either written or via Zoom when we meet again. So, second motion, it's a long amendment. So however, we need to phrase that. That's where I'm-
I will second that. And as a member of the Children's Hospital as well, I would respectfully ask for that same consideration.
Okay. I think Philip seconded the motion on the 10th. The amendment.
That's fine.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Clarification to note, we're not talking about moving the whole meeting. We're just talking about scheduling a special meeting for this purpose, not moving the regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none. Nicole?
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
I have a question on the original motion.
Yes, ma'am.
A redefining action on the lease agreement and also the associated amendment to the agreement.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Ward?
Just for the record, if I, if I had my way about it, I would, I would find some way or postpone the decision on this matter until the city was open for business, meaning that we were back in city hall and people could come and make comments about this. This is just my personal opinion on this matter. But appreciate your indulging me there. Thank you.
I wish I could tell you when we're going to be open for business again, but that's like going to Las Vegas and betting. Okay. Any, anyone else? And do I, no executive session needed? The-
And we need a vote on the motion.
The original motion, which was amended for a week from today. Nicole?
Councilmember Popsin?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just as, wanted to point out that I believe our procedures have changed to allow people to appear in a Zoom meeting, if I'm not mistaken, for public comment, which is correct?
That was part of the original, that was part of the amended motion.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. I just wanted to highlight that, that is a shift in the way we're allowing comments for people to give them in a more personal way than having them read out.
Excuse me. Is there a time been set for that meeting on the 10th?
There has not been time set, but we'll probably get back to you, probably about the same time a week from today.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Smith, just to go back to you, we were going to shoot for having a public comment period where people can speak for up to three minutes at our next council meeting, but we're going to try to incorporate it into this next week. Thank you.
Mayor, before you sign off, just since of all the questions on transparency, I would certainly recommend that we try to do this meeting at 6 o'clock on Monday and respect the people that are working.
Well, we voted, yeah, we voted on this already.
Not with a time.
Not with a time, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The time, the time was not part of the motion. That was to be determined by-
Be determined.
To be determined. Very good. No executive session is needed. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.